All right. Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Committee of the Whole for the District of Squamish for Monday, September 30th. We are meeting on the traditional Anthea territory of the Squamish Nation. And I have a motion to adopt the agenda. Moved by Mayor Elliott, seconded by Councilor Hefner. And we only have one item here, but an important one today on the 2020 Commercials Tax Exemptions. I will pass it over to Ms. Plasen in just a minute. But in terms of order of process, I understand there's a few conflicts of interest or a few items that are up for current tax exemption. So Ms. Plasen is going to start with a little bit of background on permissive tax exemptions, and then as there's kind of three different classes that we'll walk through, and she'll give us heads up for which ones, and then we'll excuse ourselves as necessary. Over to you.
Thank you. My name is Lynda Plasen. I'm the manager of financial operations, and today we're going to talk about the permissive tax exemptions for 2020. This year, we have about 15 applications. We typically, in the District of Squamish, like to group certain applications that have the same characteristics. This year is a big group of applications that we normally don't have this many, and they're to do with the nonprofits. Next year, I think it's going to be the churches and surrounding areas around the church. So there may not be as many. For the agenda today, I'm just going to talk about some guiding principles and evaluation questions that we like to ask ourselves when we're evaluating the PTEs. The authority to grant the PTE, and then we'll go through the three-year PTE, the one-year PTE, PTEs that are not eligible, and some items for discussion. First of all, PTEs, permissive tax exemptions, just so we all understand that's what it's So some guiding principles. PTEs exempt all agency taxes. So that includes your school taxes, your hospital taxes, and all the other regional taxes, as well as your municipal taxes. The exemption stays with that property, and we're not able to give exemption for a portion of the year. We have to give exemption for the whole property, for the whole year. If, for an example, something changes within the year and that property gets sold halfway through the year, we have no mechanism to clawback any taxes. It becomes a taxable property. When you choose to give a applicant a PTE, the rest of the community picks up that PTE Council is not allowed to provide assistance to for-profit companies. So when you're looking at nonprofits that have a lease, and the lease is held with a for-profit company, B.C. assessment looks right through to the for-profit company and says that for-profit company is getting that benefit. So you have to look through the lease. Council may refer applicants to a community enhancement grant. If for whatever reason council is not comfortable, or it wishes to have more information or evaluation time, you may provide, or may ask the applicant to go to the community enhancement grant program. And of course, as we all like to say, is the PTE should be very carefully considered. Some of the questions that we contemplate when we're reviewing the PTEs, a lot of these are self-explanatory, but there's a few that I'd like to highlight. When we're looking at an application, we like to make sure that the applicant has benefits that are quite broad in the community. We like to understand the financial impact to the other ratepayers. We don't want to give, is there, we want to look at whether or not the service is available to the private sector. And want to be careful that we don't set a precedent, or knowingly set, unknowingly set a precedent. So when we're getting a new applicant, we want to make sure that we agree to, with the applicant, and it follows our values and their direction. So for the authority to grant a PTE, I am going to have two slides on this. The land must be owned by a nonprofit organization. And that's an important one for today. Sometimes, certain properties are given a statutory exemption, and that's under Section 220 of the Community Charter. Those kind of properties also could get a PTE. So when, how Section 220 works, it gives you the improvement, gives you a statutory exemption for the improvement. So let's just take a church, for example. The church building, it'll give you a statutory exemption for that. And then the footprint that the church sits on. But it doesn't give you the statutory exemption for the parking lot or the landscaping. So this Section 224 provides council to choose whether or not they want to provide the exemption for that. Okay? We have one applicant that's similar to this. It's a senior's home. So they have the improvement and the footprint, and we get to make a decision whether or not we want to give a PTE for the area around that. And then lands and improvement owned by athletic or service clubs, we have one applicant that falls into this area, Formula Two. The PTE cannot be more than 10 years in the District of Squamish. Most of our PTEs are three years or less. We can only adopt the PTE once we give a notice. So after today's meeting, I'll be advertising, following your direction, and then I'll be advertising again the following week. The bylaw comes into force on October 30th, 31st. We have to adopt the bylaws by that time. You can have only a portion of the property be exempt, depending on what the use of that property is. And as long as the property conforms with what the PTE, what it says on the PTE. So if somewhere throughout the year, the District of Squamish realizes that it's no longer held by a nonprofit, and it's been sold the following year, we may rescind that bylaw and issue a new one. Or just rescind, depending on what it is. So at this time, I'm going to go into the three-year applicants. So...
Do you want to stop and ask if council have any questions on this date? Concerned with where you're getting the date, Council Penningill?
Yeah. Just on the one item, two screens back, I just wonder if you can go back. The, or to number five, service model built in the private sector, does that mean there's a private sector provider providing the same service? Or does that mean referred to this nonprofit serves for-profit and nonprofit entities?
I think, I think those questions are, if the private sector is providing that service, and so is the applicant, are you giving the applicant a benefit over that private sector? It's a consideration. It's not yes or no. It's a consideration.
Council Heffner?
Thank you. The part where if we issue a PTE, and then that property was to change hands in the middle on that tax report, on the three-year, I think you just covered it in your last, your last statement before we went to move on. But in the three-year, we would reassess it at this point of the year, if something like that had happened, and if we grant these three years that we're going to launch into now. How does that?
So, yeah. If one of the organizations sells their house, or sells their property within that three-year period, when the District of Squamish gets notification of that, and it goes into a for-profit, we would bring that to council, perhaps rescind that portion of that bylaw. And it depends who owns the property, right?
Or reassess.
Yeah. But we couldn't, we can't do six months here and six months there.
No, no, but a certain annual type.
Yeah.
Any questions? I have one. So a number of these PTEs are multi-year.
Yes.
Do we have any sense of what existing PTE bylaws are out there? So what value we are roughly already dedicated to, given existing bylaws?
Yeah, these are a big bunch. There's about 50,000 out there right now.
Okay. All right. So council, I think we're about to move on to the first set of PTE exemption policy, which includes the Alano Club of Squamish, Ausbound Women's Center, Royal Canadian Legion, Sea to Sky Forest Center, Sea to Sky Nordics, and West Coast Railway Association.
Yes.
So if anybody has any conflicts with those, how's the race?
West Coast Railway Association, I'm a member of that.
All right. Any questions?
Yes, I'm a member and a recent director of the Sea to Sky Forest Center Society.
All right. So we'll let you two refuse yourself.
Point order, can we discuss the other ones, and then say the individual?
Yep.
So, if I might, it's just a, it's a heads up for council to not to focus on the ones where there's a conflict, and we're having another discussion until persons try to compartmentalize the comment.
All right. So for this discussion, I was just going to go through a few of these and highlight a few items. I did provide a list of, of the nonprofits and what they do. But the Alano Club of Squamish, they have two properties downtown on Third Avenue. They hold Alcoholics Anonymous meetings and Cocaine Anonymous meetings, as well as Weight Watchers and other sober events, such as Christmas parties and community dancing, and car games and regional games. The House and Women's Center has also two properties. They have a transition house that provides emergency shelter, as well as drop-in center here downtown. The Mammoth River Society runs a campground. They are a nonprofit, and they have a license of occupation, so they own that property. They have a license of occupation. The Legion is serving, is a community-oriented nonprofit organization that strives to connect those who are serving or have served our country so that they may give aid as required. The Nordics is Sea to Sky Nordic Club. They provide year-round programs for families, for cross-country skiing, basketball, and ski jumping. And the Sea to Sky Forest Society and the West Coast Railway.
So council, any comments, questions on those items of the outline? Council Penningill?
Just a couple of questions coming out of this. A nonprofit, what do we mean when we say that? I assume it's something different than just being a registered B.C. society. Is there another piece there that...
Generally, we just take the registered or they're a nonprofit society. We haven't really gone into a lot of digging into the organizations.
And then Al Anon, you said they have two properties?
They have two properties in one house, and the house seems to be in the, on either side of that property. So it's right behind, I see. It's where the district staff sometimes park their vehicles.
And do we, like, have a sense or a concern about, you know, is there 24/7 service? Or, you know, I guess I'm just trying to wrap my head around, or have an understanding of the operations, when talking about two properties and so on.
Yeah. So they, I think they're available 24/7? Sorry, there was a lot.
That's all right. Those are very large finders.
Number of users per service during the season. It said 300 to 400 per week.
Thank you. Could I answer your question, Council?
Yep.
Any other comments or questions about these particular PTEs?
I'll make a comment about the Mammoth River Society. Just, that one, to me, is the one that sticks out from these other ones, because it is basically a business running through a nonprofit society. Some societies do make a profit. The difference is they can't distribute it to their shareholders. That's the only difference, really, between a society and a company fundamentally. So here, we have a campground, making profit according to material, and there are other sort of campground-type operations in the district. So that would, that, to me, kind of upsets the balance. They're all campgrounds. It's not like some of the other ones, which provide more of a social purpose, if you like, like the Alano Club, for example, Women's Center, so. So apart from that, the ones we're looking at, I don't have a problem with the other ones. That's the one I have a problem with.
The staff report talks about the net income for the MRAS, but not expenses, so it's hard to say whether they have profit.
They had...
I take council raise's point.
Yeah.
I agree, this is the one that sticks out a little bit to me, but net income doesn't necessarily mean any profit.
So their income was $101,803. Their expenses were 43. They had net income of $15,000.
Right.
I think you can pay $1,823,000 if that's your income. Council Rice?
Well, just to get this going, I will move the exemption for the Alano Club, Women's Center, Legion, and Nordics.
Thank you.
Captain Mayor Elliott, any further comments, discussion? Council Anderson?
Yes, I'm going to support this motion. Regarding the campground, the commercial operators have recently and a few years ago, during the time period of the development of that...
The River Society campground is actually not in the motion that we're speaking to at the moment.
Oh, I see. I just assumed because it is excluded, that's why it's going to speak to it. But that's fine.
I think we'll make a separate motion on that one. So anybody want to speak to the one, two, three, four applicants that are within this motion? I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries? And then we do have to deal with the Mammoth River Society as a separate motion?
Unless, only if someone wants to put it forward.
Only if someone wants to put it forward as a, available for a permissive tax exemption. Seeing no movement there, I will suggest that we speak to the Sea to Sky Forest Center Society next.
And as I'm a recent director of the society and a current member, I'll excuse myself in this discussion.
And you're also going to recuse yourself from the West Coast Railway Heritage, isn't that right?
It's actually the Squamish Valley Golf and Country Club.
So you'll come back? All right.
Yes, the same situation. Recent director, current member.
All right. We'll switch you back up, and West Coast Railway comes back up. Thank you, Council Anderson.
Okay. So the Forest Center Society is a municipal occupier here? Okay. Is a municipal occupier. They lease a small portion of land by the Adventure Center. I'm not sure if they've got their society up and running, but it's a small amount.
Council Rice?
The purpose of this society is the, it doesn't exist yet, but is the Forest Center Museum.
Yes.
And the land has been sort of allocated by the district in the parking lot across from the Adventure Center. So for me, museum is a charitable activity. It's typically an educational facility, so I don't have a problem with this one.
Clarifying question, is their application to become a society in stream, or is it...
They are a society.
They are an incorporated society?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for that question. Any else have any other questions or comments on this one?
I'll move this one.
Moved by Mayor Elliott, seconded by Council Rice. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries? And next up, we'll talk about the West Coast Railway Association.
And I'll recuse myself in this discussion. I am a member of that society, and I'll give the ones. Council Anderson.
Any questions, Senator? Is the last one? Welcome back, Council Anderson. Over to you, Ms. Plasen.
Okay. The West Coast Railway Museum operates at the Heritage Park, and they have two properties that they're requesting a PTE.
Any comments, discussion on this one, council? Council Penningill?
I guess, because it refers to an old bylaw, I presume historically we have granted this PTE. Fairly large amount of money. Do we have or plan to have, in speaking a bit to the last item, a general policy that we lean towards granting these two museums? As opposed to sort of picking and choosing, or it sort of falls into a museum bucket or historical bucket for me?
Our policy is silent online. We don't have a policy that we grant these museums. I believe our policy needs some work to understand what the direction of policy is.
Mayor Elliott?
I think, for me, historically, the reason this one makes sense is because they are very active in supporting so many things in our community. Not only do they operate as a museum and provide that sort of sense of heritage and connection to our past, but they are a community gathering space. They provide a lot of benefit to the community. That way, they host community-focused events, not just events focused on tourists. And so it becomes a very important social hub in my mind, which is why I've never had a problem in the past extending the PTE towards this organization. I think it answers all the questions that staff ask, and this one just makes sense. I'll move this one.
Mayor Elliott, seconded by Council Rich. Any further discussion? Council Penningill?
Yeah, given where we are, I don't have, I'm okay to support this, but I do think we should develop a policy and maybe think about an overall budget for maybe museum-type entities. I expect, you know, it seems typical for museums to support the community in these sorts of ways, and there may be a threshold that we have. And then rather than picking and choosing our favorites, it might be, you know, again, looking to the future to have a more general policy around this sort of thing.
Any further comments?
I will agree with Council Penningill that it looks like policy work is outstanding or needed for the heritage organizations, museums, and perhaps other categories as well as we may come across. I'll be supporting the motion.
All right. I'll call the question for the PTE exempting for the West Coast Railway Association. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries?
Can I make another motion then, based on the comments from you two councilors? Is that prior to the PTE coming back before us next year, that staff begin to policy around museums and heritage associations and bring back recommendations for the next year's PTE?
Moved by...
I'll be seconded.
Moved by Mayor Elliott, seconded by Council Anderson. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries? Thank you. All right.
Need to get council...
All right. We're looking at one-year applicants for the PTE. I know that there are a few conflicts around the Squamish Valley Golf and Country Club, so we'll hold that one until the end of the conversation. Are there any other conflicts with those on the list? All right. Over to you, Ms. Plasen.
Okay. For the one-year applicants, some of them have applied for three years, but I pulled them out, and I'm recommending a one-year program for various reasons. For the B.C. Lions Society, this is the camp in Squamish, the B.C. Lions Camp, and they've had some financial difficulty, and they haven't been able to operate their camp. However, after speaking with them, they have a new program in place of waiting for some federal funding, and they, once they receive that federal funding, they will be opening for the next summer season. So I've recommended a one-year PTE for them. The Squamish Helping Hands Society, we're building a, they're ready to be moving to a new location under One Roof, so I've recommended a one-year PTE for those. And the Squamish Senior Citizens Home as well, they're also building, I understand, and I'm recommending a one-year PTE for those.
Mayor Elliott?
So later in the conversation, we're going to talk about Sea to Sky Community Services and the properties they operate in terms of purpose-built rental. One could argue that these are another form of purpose-built rental, so I'm wondering how we're distinguishing between these and the ones you've got listed later for Sea to Sky Community Services.
So for the senior citizens homes, the senior citizen home is a statutory exemption. So the building itself and the footprint it sits on is a very statutory exempt. The one property is just the parking lot, and then the other property was the main property, or the building right now. So it's somewhat different than that, the Sea to Sky Community Services rental, the other time, not statutory.
And is it the same with the Helping Hands Society, their statutory exemption?
That is a municipal, I can vary on that, because I don't have a legal right now. So there would have to be tax on that, if we didn't give them a PTE. But in the near, yeah, given in the future, when all these buildings are built, which don't have to be...
Council Pennington?
Just so I understand, does that suggest that in the future, when Under One Roof is completed and so on, the accessible value for Helping Hands will be much higher, and therefore, if there is another ask, can we expect in the future to go much higher?
I'm not sure how that will look. We have, there's going to be rental units in there as well, under One Roof. So it's more complex, definitely more complex for next year when that comes online. Therefore, this discussion coming up with the rental units is something where the staff needs to understand the direction, Council.
Council?
When I looked at this, I had similar thought to Mayor Elliott, but I kind of distinguish it in my mind between some of these are just submarket rentals and some of them are assisted living for more vulnerable populations. And so I kind of drew a line in my own mind about that. And so, for example, with Helping Hands, if I understand that correctly, that's assisted living. It's not just below-market rental.
Assisted living, or Squamish Helping Hands, just?
Are you talking about the office?
No, I'm talking about the food bank that's right upside here.
No, I'm looking for the?
You're talking about?
It's not this one. Sorry, it's the other one. That's just the office part?
The Helping Hands is just the food bank.
Sorry, I was thinking of that one.
Yeah, okay.
So I was just going to clarify, so for the Fire Hall, which this year will operate while they build Under One Roof. So I don't have a problem with that this year. It gets a bit trickier, and that's why we need a deeper conversation when it's authorized.
Council Pennington?
Just for my clarification, the B.C. Alliance Society for Children with Disabilities, is that for the property that in my mind is the Easter Seals?
Yeah.
I'll move all three, B.C. Alliance, Squamish Helping Hands, and Squamish Senior Citizens.
All right, I'll second those. Any further comment? I'll call the question, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. We will next discuss the Squamish Valley Golf and Country Club, Council Rice.
Yeah, I'll recuse myself with this one. I'm a member of the squash club, which is part of the same taxpayer entity. Yes, the House on Curling Club is under the fold of the Squamish Valley Golf and Country Club. I'm a recent director and current member. Thank you. I'll take myself.
All right, over to you, Ms. Clapp.
Okay, so the Squamish Valley Golf and Country Club has a 12-year agreement with the District of Squamish. It was, I think last year was the first year. And in the agreement, the lease payment is a dollar, and the approximate taxes is about $45,000. So in the agreement, we needed to develop that agreement to satisfy some of the Crown Land qualifications. And due to the nature of the assessment values changing from year to year, we bring this forward every year for Council to consider.
Council Pennington?
So, you know, are the member dues and fees and green fees and all of that, are they sort of at well below sort of market rates generally, so sort of very accessible?
I think they're quite reasonable, but I haven't done a lot of research to check it there.
I can clarify that they are a registered nonprofit.
Yes.
I don't know their number of instructions. So can I ask a separate question of when does that 12-year agreement start, or how much longer is on that 12-year agreement?
2029 is the end date. I just wanted to make sure.
Council Rice?
So there's this approximate $45,000. What did they pay last year?
$43,000.
And how did that figure of $43,000 get landed?
Well, because the assessments change, the value changes. So in the bylaw, when you read the bylaws, it's in a, say, percentage. Like, we have to give B.C. Assessment a certain percentage of what to exempt. So this is your proportional, the portion is exempt option. So we have to give B.C. Assessment that portion, and we don't always know exactly what the assessment will be today, in October, when the assessments come out in January, or in September. So that's why we say approximately. And it sits around 43, 42, 44, 49.
Council Pennington?
Thank you. In this agreement, the 12-year agreement, it says annual review. Is that annual review, which we're doing now, put in there to account for that fluctuation? And it's assumed that this was, this is what happens annually? Is that sort of the language in that agreement?
Yeah, the, because the assessments change every year, we have to draw up the bylaw every year. We make this for 12 years.
I can just add a little bit of clarity. So the amount that they're exempted from is on the municipal-owned portions as opposed to any of the for-profit business that runs out of there, because there are a couple of businesses and they still pay the tax. Any, and their total taxable is in the range of about approximately using your explanation, is about $90,000. So that's the school and provincial taxes and regional district that we still collect for, so they still pay for that. And that amount was landed on through negotiation with what would their lease amount be? Lease versus tax, and we've done various things over the years. And any monies that they collect from tournaments or green fees, memberships, goes back into the capital infrastructure, and that's part of the agreement. So all of their money that they get goes back into the facility itself, whether it's outside, inside, upgrades to the building, because it is our building as well. And then, and they take care of all of them. So that's why it's sort of worked this way. There's, it's quite intricate, but we do see that we get something out of it at the end of the day as well. And it's completely in Council's realm, but we do have an agreement with them. I hope that made sense, and I wasn't kind of rambling.
It's kind of a rambly situation.
Yeah, well, I just turned my head around, you know, what the agreement then actually said, like what we are compelled to stick to versus where we have some room to make adjustments, and how much time is left in our 12 years?
It's reviewed, there is a review period, I think it's after week five. Do you have a copy of that?
I don't have a break.
I suspect that we put in there some, a set period of time where we could revisit it. And we can send that to Council, no problem. I will send it around if that helps before the bylaws come to readings that you want information, or even later on this afternoon.
That would be helpful, I think. I think we are on a relatively tight timeline here to get these bylaws through Council. There's obviously some history here on this component that this Council would probably be helpful to review. And then, so I'm going to move that we allow the PTE to the Squamish Valley Golf and Country Club for this year. And that Council knows the time to review the details of the agreement in light for next year. Any questions?
I have a quick question, and I might, I don't know. Sir, the rationale between splitting this out to the one, in the one-year bucket versus the three-year bucket, given that we've got a 12-year agreement, I just can't, is that to, yeah, I'm just going to speak to that, I missed that.
Yeah, it's all mathematical. It's to get the percentage to be about $45,000, if the assessments fluctuate throughout the years. And because the bylaw has the actual percentage in it, I have to pass it every year.
I'll second.
Seconded by Council Kerford. Any further comments? I'll call the question, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. We will bring Council Rice and Council Anderson back in, please. Ms. Mc, and over to you, Ms. Clapp, for the next set.
Great. Next, we're going to talk about two applicants that did not all apply for the municipal tax exemption.
All right, so we have a conflict of interest on the second one, the Squamish Monkey Story School. We'll discuss the Align Collective 21st.
Okay. The Align Collective, basically leases property from an investment company. And as B.C. Assessment reviews that, and it's owned by the investment company, and the breakthrough from the leaseholder to, to the leaseholder, from leasing to the leaseholder, the benefit would have been deemed the investment company, not the Align Collective, so they're not eligible.
So I will recuse myself from the next discussion. My husband is on the board of a not-for-profit elementary school, which is different than daycare. And so don't have a perception of that, so we know that's something that's special.
And the same with the Squamish Monkey Story School Society that runs the school on the new property. They are leasing that from a development company. Spoken with B.C. Assessment a number of times to try to understand. Recently, our advocate, and our legal counsel as well, has referred back to B.C. Assessment, that they're not eligible for a permanent tax exemption because they don't have that. I have talked with them, and I recommend that they work with B.C. Assessment to, because they have a provincial curriculum, and with their legal counsel to see if they can get statutory release. Not offering any advice, but there might be benefit to taking that.
Council, any questions, comments on these two? Council Pennington?
Well, I think the first one also, there's a technically for-profit business providing a snide medical service, so that some of the policies we have seem to be aligned with that one as well.
So I don't think we need to move anything, but I might move that staff refer these two to the community enhancement grants process if there's particular programming that either nonprofit would like to see some financial support from the district. Anybody else want a second? No? All right, we'll leave it at that then. All right, I think we're good to keep going. Over to Mayor Elliott, back in. Over to you, Ms. Clapp.
Okay, so for the next two slides, this slide is about rental units and this slide is about daycare. I have not included either of those into the bylaws, I currently have dropped it up. We have two organizations that are requesting a permanent tax exemption for rental units. One is the Sea Sky Community Services, and the other is the House Sound Women's Center. The Sea Sky Community Services runs three housing units. And you see the ownership there, they own 17 units. In Center Point, the province owns the remaining 50. In Castle Rock, it's a combination of we own the land and the province owns the building. And in Riverstone, it's a combination between the province and the development corporation. So the development corporation would not be eligible for a permanent tax exemption. Last year, when we brought this forward to Council, when we were looking at Center Point, Council, Council agreed that we would provide a framework for affordable housing, and we have an actual plan to assess the impact of potential PTEs to the housing. This is currently in our schedule for 2020, as far as I know. It hasn't been complete yet. And at this point, for this reason, our staff has not included these in the bylaw at the time at this time.
Mayor Elliott? Do we know what other communities are doing? That's my first question around this type of housing. And also, how, under what category are they assessed by B.C. Assessment?
So the first question, other communities, some other communities are providing permanent tax exemptions. But I could do further analysis on that. I am, I'm not sure if they are providing it just to the owners, the non-profit owners, or to the provincial owners as well. It's a distinction that we might want to look at that. So what was your second question?
How are they assessed by B.C. Assessment? Are they assessed as residential?
Yeah. They're not assessed any different.
I find it interesting that provinces are promoting trying to build more affordable housing, and then they don't create an assessment level that would accommodate something that they're subsidizing in a lot of these cases.
Yeah.
Or that they somehow follow the same sort of value as non-rental housing. So this is one of the problems, and why news policies keep going back to the province for more flexibility in the categories for assessment, because you wouldn't want to see Center Point valued in the same vein as a for-profit purpose-built rental, as last time happened. So this one is confusing to me, and I'd really like to have a greater sense of what is happening in other parts of the province. I'm not sure the province should be exempt from paying their taxes, but at the same time, the province is, you know, if we look at our Buckley out, that's going to get almost $600,000 worth of operating subsidies from the province. And then, that's our land, so if we just waive the taxes on that. What happens when, you know, nonprofits put rental housing in for-profit buildings? Then we might have two here, and three there, 10 over here, and it starts to get complicated. I don't have an answer for this one, just that it's a lot of money.
Council Rice and Council Pennington?
Thank you. And this is what I was thinking about when I made the comment earlier on the wrong slide. When I looked at this, I tried to draw a distinction between submarket housing, which is one thing, and assisted living, which to me is something else. It was sort of an assistance with vulnerable population. And so I was trying to draw the line there. So Center Point, for example, if I understand that project correctly, is assisted living. The others are submarket. And so, for me personally, that's where I would draw the line in this. But I'll wait to hear others' comments.
Council Pennington?
So I'm just trying to understand, if we were to say no to all of these, for example, would Center Point, Castle Rock then have to go to B.C. Housing and ask for more money? Would they be forced to increase the rents, or would they have to shut down the units? Like, what would sort of be the options available to them?
Well, Sea Sky Community Services do get a PTE for all their administrative buildings and all their programming and things like that. They, their 17 units that they currently have are low-market units, and the 15 that the province owns is the one that is subsidizing and are using the hill rates. So I don't know what that answer is. If I go to their application. If I go to their, their application, we do talk about what they're having. And Castle Rock, the province does provide them with funding for property taxes. That's, that's the one thing. But the others, we think that they have contracts to operate those and what they get for their rent is what they have to operate the building. So, and they, they probably have certain policies they are obligated to follow for each type of category they have in that building. It's hard for us to exactly know what's in each one of those units. Does that make sense?
Ms. Goldbeck?
I just want to, excuse me, add a point that might help. When there is an operating subsidy from B.C. Housing, property taxes are typically considered a non-controllable cost for the province. And so whatever the property tax cost is, the province will pay that as part of the operating subsidy. So whether or not there is an operating subsidy from the province, council may want to consider that in their decision.
I have a follow-up question in terms of the senior center you mentioned was a statute, they had a statutory exemption. Is there any move from, I'm guessing it's the province side, create that list of statutory exemptions, given that there is so much focus on subsidized going from rental? To move in that direction, to add another category?
I have not heard anything to that.
Yeah. Speaking to the mayor's point, I do think that this is a complicated one. And I think one of the biggest pieces that I've heard, especially of U V C M, is there's greater focus on building more of these units is also the long-term sustainability of these projects and the assets. And I think, as you mentioned, with Buckley Avenue coming on and a few others, that this gets really complicated really quickly and has a fairly large price tag that we need to consider. And so I don't, I don't know exactly where to move on for these ones this year. But I do think that going into next year's discussion of permissive tax exemptions, having that framework in place, doing the research and what other communities are doing, and this difference between operating subsidy versus not will be an important piece of that. Counselors, does anybody have a specific direction? Counselor Penney?
Well, my certain inclination might be to move, I'm not moving yet, I'm just saying what I'm thinking, move any of these where we are not, where we have doubt about B.C. Housing picking up the difference. Otherwise, grant permissive tax exemption for this year. For me, it's a priority to support this type of housing. I think overall, we're a very fortunate community and I think that's important for us to do. But I would like sort of much earlier, you know, six or eight months ahead of next year to be, having a review of the policy in general on permissive tax exemptions and understanding what our priorities are.
Mayor Pennion?
I'm inclined to follow staff recommendation, which is not to provide a PTE for rental units, which receive an operating subsidy from the province, and not to provide a PTE this year until our rental housing strategy action plan is completed in 2020. And, and I feel that way because one of the questions that we ask ourselves in making this decision is what precedent might be setting. And when we don't know the broader implications of this, I just get nervous. And, and we've got seniors, you know, it's two hundred thirty-two units coming online. We've got the over forty coming from Polting Hams. And, and all of these need to somehow fit. And of course, rental housing is a priority in our community, but I feel until I know what that big picture looks like and the potential of it, and Buckley Avenue coming on stream, that we may be putting too much onto the taxpayer. I'd also like to pursue a question with the province around B.C. Assessment and the province not taxing itself, probably. That just seems backwards to me to provide operating grants and allow these to be assessed in the same category as residential. So my, I took a great weight from this.
Counselor Penney?
Can I just get clarity and just lost track and everything? Are we talking about one year or three-year here? And have any or all of these received permissive tax exemption previously?
We've never, as far as I understand, we've never provided permissive tax exemptions to rental units.
Okay.
The Center Point, when they were building it, we didn't really know what was in the building. We provided that whole property a permissive tax exemption in twenty seventeen, in twenty eighteen or last year. But we understood what the Center Point was encompassing of, like they had all the different offices and the units. And we made the distinction that House Limb Center has always had those two units and we've never provided another PTE for those units.
So unless somebody wants to move any of these for our PTE, I think we can move the discussion along. Not seeing anything there. Staff, would you like a motion, however, with regards to some of the items that the mayor appointed to? Yes, I'm just shaking my head. All right, so I will move that staff conduct a review of the PTE policy with respect to rental units and developing a framework that addresses what other communities are doing.
We've probably told a word in the bottom case, though.
Thank you. So want staff to complete a review of the PTE policy, including the D O S Affordable Housing Strategy Action Plan? We'll try to please, sorry, try to please.
I would say that our recommendation is that staff help plan both for PTEs for rental units, which are receiving subsidy from the province, as well as rental units without an operating subsidy from the province, and bring that back as part of the U S Affordable Housing Strategy Action Plan in 2020.
Thank you. Moved by Mayor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Herford. Comments?
Just some clarification. What, what will staff use as the context for that review? Like is there sufficient direction in our O C P and so on in terms of where our values and sort of goals are in terms of all of this? Or is the idea that it's sort of a background and then we have that discussion as a council?
So I think when staff conduct reviews, they use existing policy that's in place, including the O C P's, council's strategic direction, other pieces of policy that we can move forward with regards to affordable housing. So I would imagine that staff will use that in their review. I will call the question. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries.
All right. We have one more for discussion.
So I'm going to recuse myself from this conversation as well. So this is the for-profit Squamish Mountain Story School Limited, which actually leases space from the nonprofit elementary school, which my husband is a board member. So I will recuse myself from this one as well.
As Mayor Elliott alluded to, this is a complicated property. This is also municipal architecture, so we own the land and we rent it or lease it to Sea Squamish Mountain Story School Limited, which is the daycare and Squamish Mountain Story School Society, which is the school. Now, those are on a month-to-month lease rate now. This is an application from the Sea to Sky Mountain Story School Society, which is related, is formerly the Squamish Mountain Story School Limited. So what was the for-profit formerly has now, daycare has now gone to a Sea to Sky Mountain Story Society. So they wish to lease a portion of that property from the district or their daycare. Real estate is working with them to formalize that lease. We currently don't have a lease with them. We have it with the, the Mountain Story School and the Mountain Story daycare. So it's a little bit confusing, but we can write a bylaw if council decides that they would like to give the daycare a PTE. We would write a conditional PTE. I have not included it in a, in a bylaw at this moment. I have, you know, when we're, the reason I didn't include it in a bylaw currently is we don't have a history on providing PTEs to daycare. Staff was considering the precedent setting as well. There are other daycares in the private sector. And this daycare also receives, or they, they receive the same funding from the provincial government as other daycares. And they don't provide any special subsidized daycare or different, other for-profit companies. However.
They did apply.
They applied.
Counsel, comments, questions? Counselor Penney?
Well, given our existing policy, I'm not inclined to move this, but you know, might be worth considering in that review, whether or not we should in the future consider not-for-profit daycares or independent schools in general for permissive tax exemptions. But the current policy seems to suggest this isn't something we can afford with, to have this point.
Counselor Race?
Yeah, to me, this is similar to the campground where you have maybe operated by not-for-profit, but it's fundamentally a profit-making business that's being carried on there in competition with other businesses in the community. So I agree that it would not, in my mind, be exempt.
Anybody else comments on this one? Counselor Herford?
In general, of course, of daycares, there's a need in our community for additional daycare spots, but given that they're distributed throughout the community and any number of properties have precedent, and we haven't traditionally done that, and the precedent this could create here, I'm, yeah, I'm happy to pass this one.
Yeah. I have similar sentiments. I think there's no doubt that childcare is a huge need in our community, as is affordable rental. I think this, similar to the previous slide, raises slightly about downloading of responsibility to municipal governments from the province. And I think that this does potentially set a precedent if we open this up here, so I'm not willing to do that at this point. It doesn't sound like there is anybody on the table who is. So we will leave it at that and move along.
All right. All right, so the next steps in this process, we'll review the bylaws and make sure there are any, any input I have today. We'll be advertising it this week. We'll bring the bylaws back to council for October the eighth, that's next week, for the first three readings. We'll advertise it in that same week and then we'll bring it back for the fifteenth for adoption. And then we can submit the bylaws to B.C. Assessment for implementation.
Thank you very much. Take your time line, but thanks for getting it all together. And thanks for giving us the background we needed to make these decisions.
Thank you.
All right.
He just got on the process. When it comes back to us on a bylaw, is it one bylaw for everybody or are they individual bylaws?
I, currently, we have drafted the bylaws, two bylaws, one for the one-year and one for the three-year.
I was just thinking about the conflict. If you lump them together in one bylaw, it will disqualify people for perhaps a number of different items. Can you do separate bylaws? I mean, I'm not talking about every individual one, but just to avoid the conflict.
Yes.
Yes, there is a motion here that staff advertise and bring forward District of Squamish twenty twenty permissive tax exemption bylaws for consideration. Moved by Counselor French, seconded by Mayor Elliott. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, moved by you, Mayor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Herford. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, everybody.